How do I turn on my camera from this mode? I think I can turn it on for you just one second. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for joining us today. I'm just gonna wait just a couple seconds longer and then we will kick off today's webinar. All right. Well, fantastic. Thank you so much, everyone who was able to join us today. We are really excited to present a report briefing on primary care access and equity across New York City and New York City's council districts. Just to introduce myself, I'm Mary Ford and PCDC's Director of Evaluation and Analytics. And today you will be hearing from my wonderful colleagues. We've got Angela Allard, the Evaluation Analytics Manager in the Strategy and Public Affairs Team, as well as Alexis Simonetti, who is our Health Data Analyst, also in the Strategy and Public Affairs Division. And we are also joined today by Elsa Bell. She is a Senior Program Manager in our Clinical Quality Partners Division, and we've got some really exciting content for you all today. So I think without further ado, I am going to hand this over to Angela.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mary, and thank you all for joining us today. So before we jump in, I'm just going to give a quick overview of the Primary Care Development Corporation. For those of you on the webinar that aren't familiar with our organization, and then I'll give you a little background on some of our analytics work. So PCDC was established in 1993 by the Dinkins Administration in New York City. And we really came out of a report that was published by the Community Services Society. And in this report, they identified that there were a number of neighborhoods in New York City that had severe primary care shortages. And many of these same neighborhoods also experienced high levels of poverty and some of the city's worst health outcomes. And so to that end, PCDC was really founded to address this inequity. And we are a U.S. Treasury certified community development financial institution and nonprofit, all focused on improving community health in underserved communities. And we do this in a few ways. We do this through targeted investment in primary care practices who are in need of support to expand their operations or to build and modernize facilities in order to better serve their patients. And we are also a technical assistance provider. We have trained experts that can partner with primary care and healthcare providers, all to build capacity and increase quality of services for these patients at these health centers. And lastly, we also advocate and promote policies that improve primary care. PCDC develops and advances policies at the federal, state, and local level, all to bring resources, attention, and innovation to primary care. So why, why do we care about primary care? So at PCDC, we're really committed to increasing access to high-quality, affordable primary care. And this is because we believe quality primary care is an essential component of a healthy community ecosystem, along with schools, jobs, housing, parks. And primary care is often the first point of care in the healthcare system. It's coordinated across settings and providers. And so to that end, when primary care is accessible and integrated and equitable, it really is the foundation for our healthcare system and transformational for communities. And there's plenty of research showing that access to primary care contributes significantly to community health. And so it really has the potential to alleviate health inequities across populations. But at the same time, access to primary care across the country, states, and especially in New York City exist, and they are very closely tied to other place-based inequities in health outcomes. And so given that there are these close links between primary care and other inequities, we really need to be collecting more community-level data to advance research. But most importantly, we really need this data at a community level to support our policymakers, elected officials, and stakeholders with planning and local policy initiatives that increase access and ultimately improve health in their communities. But as it stands today, there's still not a lot of information publicly available at a community or a jurisdictional level. And in New York City, for example, we definitely don't have enough data available at the city council district level, which does speak directly to policies and allocation of resources in this city. So the report findings that we're going to be discussing today come out of PCDC's very own Evaluation and Analytics Unit, which sits in our Strategy and Public Affairs Department. And we work very closely with our policy and communication teams. And so in 2017, the unit started what we call the Primary Care Safety Net Access Project, which was sort of initiated in part with funding from the New York City Council. And the goal of this project was really to make more data publicly available at the New York City Council District level. And so through this project, over the last several years, we've analyzed and made public quite a bit of data on primary care and healthcare access, as well as health status and other socioeconomic and demographic data, all available at this important New York City Council level. And so this is really a unique source, as many of these points are not readily available anywhere else. And so in the last several years, we've published multiple reports. We've also created an interactive dashboard. We will be providing the links to the, to you momentarily through the chat, and we will also follow up after the webinar via email with links to our resources. But all of our reports really are aimed at presenting timely information on primary care access and their intersection with health equity, really to provide insights, but emphasize the importance of investment in underserved communities. And we also provide actionable policy recommendations that are responsive to report findings. So part, as part of the Primary Care Safety Net Access Project, we began the process by really collecting and analyzing key measures of primary care access, health, and socioeconomic characteristics across New York City, really to begin profiling the primary care landscape across the city and identify any gaps in care that existed and highlight inequities that can be addressed at the city council district level. So in 2019, we extended the scope of this project by creating a citywide report, as well as 51 individual primary care access profiles that detail these major access and health and other related disparities across the city's 51 council districts. And in 2020, to further the utility of these reports, we built an interactive dashboard with all of the district profile data. It has four different data sections on primary care access, health status, outcomes, as well as socio-demographic data. And through this dashboard, users can query and compare measures. It's publicly available. And what you can do is look at all of these indicators by the city council district. You can also look at borough and citywide averages and can create comparisons to see how your district or other districts and neighborhoods compare across the city. And so building upon these three years of analyses examining primary care access, our 2021 report included COVID-19 outcomes to really examine the relationship between gaps in access to care and the pandemic's impact on New Yorkers. And really, we, the point of this report was to understand how the inequities that already existed have contributed to disparities and the pandemic's impact and really inform strategies to promote equity throughout the city's recovery. Our reports are very much grounded within health equity framework. We designed them to identify and analyze gaps in care across the districts, which again is the unit of analysis that really can speak directly to policies and allocation of resources, so we can really focus on investing in these disinvested communities. So today, we're going to be walking through, for the first time, our most recent report just published last week, looking at primary care providers through a health equity lens across New York City neighborhoods. And so for this report, we really wanted to focus this year on understanding, first identifying where primary care provider shortages and access points exist, and understanding the implications that primary care provider shortages have on health outcomes throughout the city, including the ever-involving pandemic and COVID outcomes across the city's council districts. So we've summarized some of the key findings. We've also provided policy recommendations that we think will help promote access to care for all New Yorkers. And we're going to go through some of these report findings. Afterward, we'll review some policy recommendations and hear from some of our speakers. But in the meantime, please feel free to put any questions and comments in the Zoom Q and A chat box. And we'll be sure to try to get through as many of them as possible at the end. So without further ado, Alexis, our Health Data Analyst, is going to be walking us through some of the report's data and key findings.
Thank you, Angela, and again, welcome, everyone. I'll be walking us through some of the findings published in our most recent data brief. So for the 2022 project, we explored and mapped primary care provider or PCP availability across New York City at the ZIP level. And in this brief, we did define PCPs to include physicians, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants with a specialty of family medicine, internal medicine, general primary care, geriatrics, or obstetrics, and gynecology. Also, data from over 20,000 PCPs practicing in New York City were analyzed to help map PCP availability across the five boroughs. And through a further breakdown of this data set, we see the majority of PCPs in New York City are in fact physicians at around 78%. With the remaining providers being nurse practitioners at 18% and physicians assistants around 3%. These data were broken down by ZIP and provides the PCP ratio or number of primary care providers per 10,000 residents in New York City. And I'm sorry, Angela, if you can pop back to that last slide, thank you. This PCP ratio was mapped to the map on the right. You can see the dark blue areas, as we can see in Manhattan, they are quite saturated with PCPs. Some neighborhoods even having upwards of 200 PCPs per 10,000 residents. Alternatively, areas in Brooklyn and Queens are showing a much lower supply. Some neighborhoods in this lower range have five or fewer PCPs per 10,000. Overall, we see a stark contrast in PCP availability across the city, even in adjacent neighborhoods. And that really highlights how widely resources can vary across neighborhoods in New York City. Next slide. In our analysis, we did find that a greater PCP availability was associated with better health outcomes of a neighborhood. The addition of 10 PCPs per 10,000 residents was associated with a reduction of 26 potentially preventable hospitalizations per 100,000 residents. Similarly, the addition of 10 PCPs per 10,000 was also associated with a reduction of five deaths per 100,000 individuals. And that's when looking at all-cause age-adjusted mortality. And these associations support the need for greater PCP availability across the city, especially when we start to see connections between PCP availability and health outcomes. So taking a look at the maps, we can see how widely these health outcomes vary across neighborhoods in New York City. The teal map illustrates the rate of potentially preventable hospitalizations per 10,000 individuals, where we can see areas of the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens have some of the highest preventable hospitalization rates. And that's represented by the darker teal. Alternatively, areas of Manhattan show a much lower preventable hospitalization rate, and that's represented by the lighter shades. And then the purple map to the right depicts the all-cause age-adjusted mortality rate per 100,000 individuals, where again, we see this darker purple in neighborhoods of the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens, which represents the highest all-cause mortality rates in the areas. Similarly, areas with the lower mortality rates represented by the lighter purple can be seen largely in Manhattan. However, in both maps, neighborhoods such as Canarsie, Brooklyn, and South Jamaica, Queens, did have some of the highest mortality rates and highest preventable hospitalization rates. But if we think back to the map on the previous slide, these areas also had some of the fewest PCPs. So overall, neighborhoods with a greater PCP availability do in fact have better health outcomes. Next slide. So shifting our focus to COVID-19, having a greater PCP availability not only supports better health outcomes, but it can also play a protective role in neighborhood-level COVID-19 outcomes. The addition of 10 PCPs per 10,000 residents was associated with a reduction of 35 COVID-19-related hospitalizations per 100,000, and also a reduction of nine COVID-19-related deaths per 100,000 individuals. And these maps to the right show a trend similar to those seen in previous maps. The red map represents the COVID-19 death rate per 100,000 individuals, with the darker red or higher COVID-19 mortality rate seen in the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens. And then the yellow map to the right shows the COVID-19 hospitalization rates with the darker yellow areas or higher rates of COVID-19 hospitalizations, also seen in those areas of the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens. So connecting back to PCP availability, neighborhoods such as Coney Island in Brooklyn and Corona, Queens, which in fact had some of the fewest PCPs, are concurrently facing some of the highest rates of adverse COVID-19 outcomes. The association seen in both population health outcomes and COVID-19 outcomes does tell us that a greater PCP availability is not only associated with chronic disease outcomes, but infectious disease outcomes as well, as we saw throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide. Also, when looking at PCP availability in historically disinvested neighborhoods, we see that resource gaps today are clearly tied to historic, historical disinvestment practices. There were great inequities when looking at PCP availability and median household income. The top 10 ZIP codes with the highest median household income had around 90 PCPs per 10,000, where the bottom 10 ZIP codes with the lowest income only had 20 PCPs per 10,000. So along with income, we were also able to look at PCP availability as it compares to historically red line maps, which were created by lending institutions in the 1930s. And in this practice, a red line was drawn around neighborhoods that were deemed hazardous for lending. And these were typically predominantly black neighborhoods. And in contrast to that, predominantly wealthy white neighborhoods were determined best for lending, and those were given the grade A by these lending institutions. So taking those maps, using geospatial analysis, we were able to find that neighborhoods still feel the effects of this housing discrimination today, as there were nearly three times fewer PCPs in historically red light areas as compared to those areas that were formerly graded best. And today, those best graded areas presently have around 72 PCPs per 10,000, whereas the formerly red line areas only have around 27 PCPs per 10,000. So these historically red line neighborhoods do remain as some of the lowest-income neighborhoods today. And this really reinforces the notion that present-day health inequities are tied to persistent inequities in resource distribution. As we saw in previous slides, there are positive associations with greater PCP availability in terms of lower mortality rates and lower hospitalization rates. However, PCP availability does vary widely across the city, often resulting in neighborhoods that have been historically disinvested, presently having some of the lowest PCP availability, and then subsequent negative health outcomes. And next slide. Shifting our focus from a ZIP level to a New York City Council District level, we do see that most districts with the highest number of PCPs, shown by the darker blue, are in Manhattan, with District Four having the highest PCP availability at around 101 PCPs per 10,000. Alternatively, the districts with the lowest PCP availability illustrated by the darker red are largely in Brooklyn and Queens. And the district with the fewest number of PCPs is District 30 in Queens, at around five PCPs per 10,000 residents. And as we can see, the trends noted previously on the ZIP level do largely translate to the council district level, with evident gaps in resource distribution being seen between districts. Neighborhoods in Queens and Brooklyn do have the lowest PCP availability and some of the highest hospitalization and all-cause mortality rates. And this is in stark contrast to well-resourced Manhattan. With a more robust PCP availability, these areas have some of the lower hospitalization and all-cause mortality rates in the city. So at the council district level, we can see how these inequities and availability of providers maps out across the city, again with many council districts in Brooklyn and Queens remaining disinvested. Although PCP availability is associated with health outcomes, other factors do play a role in both resource distribution and health outcomes of a neighborhood. For example, the Bronx, the distribution of resources is shaped by several large hospital and healthcare systems, such as Montefiore and NYC Health and Hospitals, with multiple locations spread across that borough. This does result in a greater PCP availability in the Bronx. On the other hand, the Bronx does stand as one of the poorest congressional districts in the country, so that also contributes to its higher rates of negative health outcomes. And lastly, as a part of our ongoing efforts to provide council members and primary care advocates data at the council district level, we do encourage any council member, their staff, or any champion of primary care access to reach out to the Evaluation and Analytics Team for any additional data on their district. As Angela did mention, we have been conducting this project for multiple years, so we have a lot of valuable data on the council district level across the city. And we're more than happy to serve as a resource for anyone, as we are the only organization, public or private, that is providing primary care access data on the council district level. And also, I just want to remind anyone, if you have any questions, feel free to put that in the Q and A portion. And I'll pass it to Angela for some policy recommendations.
Thank you, Alexis, for walking us through our 2022 report findings. Yes, and again, if you have any questions, just feel free to pop them over in the Q and A chat box, and I think we will have time at the end to get through most of them. So through our work in reporting over the past several years, PCDC has really developed a core set of recommendations that we think is essential to be addressed and critical for policymakers, providers, and institutions to commit to in order to increase access and improve primary care in their communities. And so the first of our recommendations is to commit to long-term investment in community-based healthcare facilities and providers in places where there is a shortage of primary care providers or facilities. And our data shows that where there were fewer primary care providers, those communities had some of the worst health outcomes in the city. And so these were also many of the same communities that were hardest hit by the pandemic. But we know that if these communities have primary care prevention and have sufficient access points and providers, people are able to get to care, the care they need, before it becomes critical and results in a potentially preventable ED visit or hospitalization. There are many ways to accomplish this goal. Could include expanding the number and types of facilities, recruiting providers, increasing funding for existing facilities through a variety of mechanisms, which could also be focused specifically on districts with some of the worst outcomes and highest primary care provider shortages. And policymakers and other advocates could also do additional investigative research using these data, looking at their districts, and also asking primary care providers about their needs and capacities. And so we really encourage lawmakers to think about how we can make sure that every community has sufficient access to primary care. So secondly, is about affordability. As we saw in our analysis, there were fewer providers in low-income areas, especially those areas that were disinvested in historically. And so we need to make sure that providers are accessible to residents from these communities. There are also still many uninsured New Yorkers, and they also need quality primary care regardless of their ability to pay. And we know that affordability isn't just an uninsured issue. We know that healthcare costs are a burden for many of those, even with insurance. And so there's a few things we can be thinking about to help those populations, like providing resources to those who can choose their health plan and help them in their decision-making process. And we can also be thinking about creating new or promoting existing assistance programs. And in New York, New York made a huge investment in access to primary care recently with their New York City Care Program that facilitates access to primary care for a variety of folks. And we believe that this program or others could be expanded to more providers to ensure better access for low-income New Yorkers. It needs to be funded more robustly. And recently, actually, they have extended the program to include FQHCs that currently only had applied to health and hospital facilities. And so this is really one place where we can start thinking about increasing investment. So lastly, the other thing about expanding access to primary cares, that obviously our primary care and healthcare workforce is very important, but they've been incredibly hard-hit by the pandemic. Many have retired or left due to fatigue. And there were shortages before the pandemic, and so we're just anticipating that these shortages are going to continue to grow. And so to that end, we need to make sure that we're really growing our primary care and healthcare workforce and that we're recruiting interprofessional care. and that we're recruiting interprofessional care teams from within the communities they serve. So we can start building trust and making sure you know, people do have providers who can speak their languages, who are responsive to their needs and who live in the communities that and share the values and needs of the folks they're serving. And policymakers and advocates really have a lot of options when it comes to concrete policies that could improve recruitment and training and retention of all types of providers, including nurses, social workers, community health workers. When recruited from neighborhoods they serve and those who are embedded in the community, and these are all really proven to improve trust and outcomes for patients. There's also lots of opportunities for pilots or other programs to adopt or strengthen existing team-based care models. But in this moment where everyone is talking about how to build back better and what we can do differently, it's really the perfect opportunity to think about systemizing the integration of primary care into the healthcare system, specifically behavioral health and social services. And there's lots of other states and municipalities that I think we can look to and thinking about how we can build capacity and strong networks between organizations. Those were our top three recommendations that were really coming out of this report and are responsive to some of our findings. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ilsa, who's going to be talking about our Wells Fargo partnership and some opportunities for engagement there.
Thank you Angela and Alexis and Mary. So I'm going to discuss today our partnership with the Wells Fargo Foundation, which I think just extends or further demonstrates our footprint in the primary care arena. So next slide, please Angela. In June of twenty twenty-one, PCD was awarded a grant from the Wells Fargo Foundation Open for Business Program, which was intended to provide training and technical assistance to minority-owned and operated primary care practices to aid in their recovery from the pandemic's economic and community health impact. For a practice to be considered for discounted or no-cost technical assistance, it must fit within certain criteria which have been determined by Wells Fargo. Practices must be small, which means under five hundred employees, have an annual revenue less than fifteen million dollars, serve a predominantly underserved or low-income community, and be located in one of three states, New York, New Jersey, or California. So as you can see, we're actually talking about some of the districts and the areas that have been highlighted in the report that was just discussed by both Alexis and Angela. With this grant, there is no stipulation as to the support that can be provided. And we, PCDC, have the flexibility to engage practices on whatever issues or pain points they currently experience. So although the intent here is to provide funding for anything that may have been a result of COVID, the engagement does not have to be specifically COVID-related. Each engagement is finite in that it totals no more than twenty hours over approximately three to four months. Next slide, please. So what you see described on the left side of the slide here is what PCD has created in terms of self-paced learning content. The Wells Fargo Grant actually allowed us to fully launch the Small Practice Management Essentials, or SPME. The link to this SPME will be included in the chat for any of you who would like to have access to it. There's no restrictions for use to this group of learning modules. Any practice, whether they're engaged in the Wells Fargo Program or not, have access to the ten modules that have been created. They are available now online and they are available at no cost. So whether a practice is engaged in Wells Fargo or not, you have access to it. We've made it available online. And of course, those practices that are engaged with Wells Fargo are able to take advantage of the SPME as well. What you see listed on the left are some of the activities or the module characteristics or topics that will you'll be able to access as part of that SPME. On the right side of the slide, what you see described there are some of the services that can be offered as TA as part of the Wells Fargo Program. This list, of course, is not exhaustive. Of note, the Wells Fargo Grant has allowed PCDC to further the New York State-funded PCMH work that initially began in twenty nineteen. This has been the bulk of the TA services that we have been able to provide to date. So we've been able to support practices in not only maintaining their PCMH recognition via annual reporting, but for those New York State practices that may not have in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty before now achieved PCMH recognition, we can now support them in obtaining PCMH recognition, which again, in alignment with what Alexis and Angela have discussed in the reporting, is intended to increase PCP access within New York State. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to do now is just highlight a current client. So the Achievable Foundation is one of the practices that we currently have enrolled in the Wells Fargo Program. Our engagement with Achievable began in June sixth of twenty twenty. They are located in Culver City, California, one of the three states that's mandated under the stipulations that Wells Fargo has given us. As an FQHC, which is a federally qualified health center, the way I describe it to those who are not in healthcare is this is the Medicaid clinics of old. So an FQHC, like so many other safety net providers, finds itself providing care to an oft-overlooked and underserved population, the exact population that we have been discussing again earlier today. And that population often has needs which may far outpace their resources. So this is exactly the type of practice that this program, this Wells Fargo Grant and this program was intended to assist. And as you can see from what's listed here on the slide, the center provides care to adults with ADD. So they are servicing not only an FQHC population, but a more vulnerable FQHC population in that these are adults with ADD. Next slide, please. So when Achievable came to us, what they asked for was assistance with implementing risk stratification. And risk stratification is a process that a practice will use to assign patients a risk level. And that risk level would be based on data that they enter into their EHR that reflects vital health indicators such as their medical or BH history. And using that BH or medical history, they can assign a risk level such as a low, moderate, high, or perhaps one, two, three, etc. It just depends on whatever levels the practice wants to use. Stratifying patients by risks helps to do several things. It can help a practice address specific population management challenges. So it can tell a practice what percentage of their patients have which conditions and also how severe those conditions are. It can help a practice match risk level with levels of care such as care management. So give them the ability to match a high-risk patient with a higher level of care. Similar to what was being described with the PCP numbers and lower levels of hospitalization and death. When you have risk levels assigned in a practice, you understand where your resources need to be centered because you know which patients need more care. Risk stratification also helps you individualize treatment plans to help you lower risk and improve function. So the goal there is you create a treatment plan for these patients who may be in care management based on this risk level. And by giving them higher levels of care, you hope that you improve their function thereby decreasing their risk. So moving them from a higher risk level to a lower risk level. So individualizing those treatment plans, again, moving resources where they're most needed based on that level of risk. And lastly, stratifying by risk can help the practice align with value-based care approaches. For most payers, the higher-risk patients may actually provide higher incentive dollars. So if you have higher-risk patients, you will know which group of patients may provide you with higher incentives. So for Achievable, this was one of the areas of particular concern for them. They are in a ever-changing payer environment in California. And they wanted to figure out how to implement a risk stratification model for not only their ADD patients, but for their entire population. And that is one thing that I want to emphasize. When you, when you implement risk stratification, you don't do it for a specific subpopulation. You do it for all of your patients so that you know which of your patients are not only low-risk, but those patients that may be high-risk, but also rising risk. Because of course, it's the patients that are rising risk, which may be those potential high-risk patients in the near future. And you want to prevent them from becoming high-risk as well. So Achievable understands that in this changing payer environment, they know what they need to do in terms of getting a risk stratification model in place. They understand why they need to do it. But it was the how of doing it that had gotten them stuck, and that's where we came in. So we're currently in the beginning of our engagement. As I said, we started June sixth of this year. And our work so far has focused on deciding on that how. Is it better to create a risk stratification tool de novo? Do we create or help Achievable create their own risk strat based on the conditions that are unique to their patient population? Do we modify an existing model? Or do we fully implement a current model that has been in place like the AFP model or a CUPS model that's already been out there and been time-tested? So this is where we are in terms of our initial engagement, trying to figure out exactly what the best steps to do with Achievable. Next slide, please Angela. So lastly, as I said, the engagement is finite. We have twenty hours over approximately three to four months. So what you see listed here is our projected solution for Achievable. We have four components of this engagement, and we have projected hours for each of these four components. Of course, we recognize that we will not be able to fully implement and quality test a risk stratification model in twenty hours. But we will be able to build a solid foundation for the community health center to build on as they continue the work that we've started together. We also will leave the practice with resources. We provide them both written resources such as several types and various examples of risk stratification tools and models. But we also partner them with other practices and other community health centers whenever possible. And we do that so that they have a network of support after our engagement has ended that they can pull on or lean on after our engagement has ended, if there are any questions. And we link them with centers or practices that have similar populations or service similar communities, and that may possibly be working on similar issues. Hopefully to develop best practices so they can continue to work together. Staff training, as you see listed here, is also a core component of each practice engagement with the Wells Fargo Grant Program because we want to make sure that we're also building a stronger primary care workforce. Angela indicated those three suggestions that we have for improving access, equity, all of that goes into building a better workforce. So staff training is always a component of the of the, any engagement that we do as part of this grant. So that's all I have. I think I believe I turned it back over to Mary, so that's what I'm going to do for any question.
Yes, thank you so much for sharing all of that content. I think we've got a couple minutes just for a few questions. There have been some great questions coming through the Q and A. Just first, to address one question we've got a couple times, we will be sending out a follow-up email to all participants that will include the links to all of the reports and dashboard that we mentioned as well as contact information and more to the Wells Fargo project that Ilsa discussed. And we can also make available the PowerPoint slides and the recording of this today, so definitely don't worry about that. So one question that I'll just touch on really briefly in the interest of time, but certainly happy to discuss with anyone more in depth. The question was really around whether the presence of more primary care providers alone impacts better health for New Yorkers or whether types of health insurance accepted factors in. So this is a really great question. For this specific analysis that we talked through today, we were really looking at the PCP availability or supply sort of agnostic to types of insurance that's being accepted. I think what we wanted to demonstrate here is that having a PCP physically located in communities does really make a difference. But we know that having a PCP maybe at the end of your street alone does not mean that a patient or community resident actually has access. You often need health insurance or you need the type of health insurance that that provider accepts. And then there's really a host of kind of accessibility, capacity, and quality issues that also impact whether a community resident or patient really has access to those providers in the surrounding community. We have done some research around this and some of our other reports that we'll be happy to share looking primarily at public health insurance, so Medicaid and Medicare. And we have found that in New York City, providers in lower-income communities do have higher rates of Medicaid acceptance. And providers in older communities have higher rates of Medicare acceptance. So it does look, at least in relation to these public insurance types that providers in these communities are generally somewhat responsive to the kind of underlying characteristics of the community residents. But that is a great question. And very quickly, I'm going to have one question for Angela. That is definitely something that we have thought about a lot. And the question is, what is, or maybe is there a kind of more or less ideal PCP rate per ten thousand?
Yeah, that's, thank you for that question. I think the literature is agreeing on for an average patient panel size for one provider, fifteen hundred tends to be the number, but it does vary a lot in research. And we also think that it's a lot more complicated than just a single provider ratio. I think it really depends on the underlying population and what that underlying population's needs are because they do differ. For example, one population might have faced more barriers to accessing care, whether it's affordability, time, things like this. And if there's a community with relatively high income and relatively better off health status, I think they're going to need a lot less providers or certainly a lot less services than folks from a lower-income community that also have higher rates of chronic diseases that might need more kind of disease management, for example. And so it does depend on, on the other community factors. And I think this is really similar to when HERSA, the Human Resources and Services Administration, does their designates their areas as health professional shortage areas or medical underserved areas, which is one of the funding mechanisms for primary care and community health centers. I think this is very similar to the things that they consider in that calculation. For example, they look, they don't just look at the supply of providers, but they also look at age of the population, poverty rates, infant mortality rates. So there's definitely different factors that kind of get at relative need and not just supply that matter when we're thinking about like, what's the right amount for one community? What's the right amount of providers that a specific community needs to have? And I think in New York specifically does tend to have relatively to other cities across the country, a pretty high provider to population ratio. But again, we see that there's these really big health disparities in the city and some of the some communities, some of the worst health outcomes, not just in the city, but also across the country and the state. And so this suggests that Um, and so this suggests that, you know, we really do, um, need to be thinking about other pieces of primary care other than providers. But this is definitely, um, one very important, um, piece that is consistently showing up. Um, when it comes to how do we increase access, um, in communities? And I think definitely a very good question. I think something that, um, we've been thinking about is, um, as like a next step, um, for our research is. How can we try to develop, um, something similar, um, for this city and really test and validate? What are the, um, specific inputs, um, that we might need to be looking at when thinking about what's the right amount of, uh, supply of providers? In this specific community that has these needs?
Fantastic, thanks Angela, and again, thank you to the audience, um, and attendees today for some great questions. I realize we're a little bit over time, um, but if we didn't get to your question today, we will definitely reach out about that. And for everyone, um, who attended today, again, we'll send a follow-up email with all of the, um, links and pieces of information that were, um, referenced today. So again, thank you so much for attending and hopefully we can talk to and hear from many of you soon.